Twenty-one, call the special meeting, the Enfield Town Council, Monday, October 5th, five thirty-one PM, October 5th, 2020. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Councillor Bosco. Councillor Sikala.
Here.
Councillor Hemler.
Here.
Councillor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Rabin.
Here.
Councillor Muller.
Here.
Councillor Riley.
Here.
Councillor Sveraza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Susak. Is here. Councillor Undyer.
Here.
Mr. Member's present, one is absent.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item two in the agenda, the Connecticut Green Bank. Who do we have here on behalf of the Connecticut Green Bank?
Looks like a couple of banditos to the left and a new face in the middle, so welcome.
Is Kasia, are you, is this yours? Do you want to introduce and maybe just name and title of folks who are presenting?
Director, hello. So we have Emily and actually, you don't know, but I have a master named Mackie Dykes from Connecticut Green Bank. I heard Emily give a presentation at joint facilities a few months back, and at their press with Deputy Mayor Susak, we invited them here to give the presentation all council. And I'll welcome them on now, and if you could just give your titles as well, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make an inquiry to see if Donna, Susak, and Mr. Kiner have us, are they hearing us well this time, Bill perhaps, and Donna and the other staff?
Yeah, Chris.
You sound great. You've heard everybody. Thank you.
Wonderful. As you know, I'd just like to credit, again, Alex and Paul and Debbie for jumping on the trouble we had last time. We got the vendors in here, got better mics and better equipment to make sure that everybody would be able to participate. So I just wanted to make sure at the outset, Mayor, that it was working. All of our testing showed that it did. So I'm glad. And if you have any trouble during the course of it, please let us know. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And so Emily, and I apologize if I didn't get the other name, if you folks wouldn't mind just your titles, and the floor is yours. Welcome to the Enfield Town Council. We're looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. I'm also showing some slides. Can you see those?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Emily Basham, and I'm the manager of partnership development at the Connecticut Green Bank. And I'm also joined by Mackie Dykes, who's the VP of our financing programs at the Connecticut Green Bank. Thank you for your time this evening. We're here to talk about the solar municipal assistance program at the Green Bank. And I'll turn it over to Mackie to get us started.
Great. Thanks, Emily. And thank you, everyone, for allowing us to join the meeting tonight. Emily, can you put your slides in presentation mode?
Yes.
There we go. Thank you. Yep, that's better. So as Emily said, my name is Mackie Dykes. I'm the Vice President of Financing Programs at the Connecticut Green Bank. We are a quasi-state agency started back in 2011 to help support Connecticut's clean energy goals by, as our name implies, by bringing the tools of financing to bear to help pay for the projects that are needed to meet the clean energy goals that the governor and the legislature lay out. So we are publicly funded, publicly created with that mission, so not a private bank driven by profit, but more so, again, by helping the state achieve its goals. We take the public funding we get to partner with private investors to drive in private capital to help pay for these projects. The, you know, back in 2011, when we started, the legislature and the governor realized the state, we don't have enough money to support everything that needed to happen to meet the clean energy goals ourselves. So we were created to figure out ways to get private capital in at affordable rates to help consumers access the money they needed to make these projects happen. Next slide. So we created the Solar Map Program, which we'll talk about in a minute, to help municipalities realize their solar goals. It's run in conjunction with CSW Energy. They're a Connecticut-based solar engineering firm. We chose them through an RFP to help support the program. I don't believe Alan Savins is on the call, but hopefully we'll have more meetings to come, and then you'll get to know CSW Energy. Next slide. So our Solar Map Program, though, since our early days, we've been helping municipalities go solar through our Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement. We'll get into that in a minute, but it's essentially a financing tool so that we can cover 100% of the cost to help a municipality go solar. And we've done dozens of projects around the state through that program. But as we were doing those projects, we saw that, and, you know, talked with towns about their path to get them done, and realized that financing was not the biggest, or not the only barrier, and oftentimes not the biggest barrier to making a solar project happen. You know, frankly, that, how you're going to pay for these projects comes typically later. And a lot of, a lot of our customers, not only municipalities, but, you know, businesses, homeowners, just don't have the time or the expertise to get to figuring out a solar project. So that's where Solar Map comes in. Next slide. So we, through this program, provide assistance to get you all the way from, hey, you know, we'd love to do some solar projects, reduce our costs, you know, provide green energy through our residents, from that sort of high-level concept all the way to actually turning on solar systems for your municipal buildings. So we start with a meeting like this, introducing the program, who we are, what we can do, and then we move from there to just really anywhere you're interested in exploring solar. We'll do the technical diligence required to make sure that there is potential there, and assuming there is, and, you know, and those sites make sense to you, then we'll, we'll go onsite, we'll develop solar proposals, we'll get utility bills, we'll do all the diligence required to make sure, you know, that is fully technically feasible with the site, and also put together a project proposal for you to review. And at that point, you know, come up with some estimates on what your solar savings could be. And once, you know, once everyone's, you know, we've got sort of concrete proposals here, what the bill, you know, what the projects could look like, if the town wants to move forward, then the Green Bank runs an RFP to find contractors to build these projects. And this is where another benefit of the program comes in, because we work with multiple towns to bundle together projects to put them out to bid. So we're able to get more attractive pricing for your project than if you were just to act alone. So, you know, right now, we're working with seven towns, and we've got 24 projects. So, you know, by acting together, municipalities can achieve better costs than nothing going out on your own. And then once we've got sort of all, now we've got all the details together, once that RFP is done, we've got someone to install it, we've got all, we've all agreed upon the sites and what the projects look like, then we sign the final agreement with you, the town, and we, you know, we start building the system and turning it on. So I'll pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Emily to talk about the, sort of the mechanism of what that contract is between the Green Bank and the town that actually makes this happen. All the work that I just went through is leading up to that agreement, to this agreement, this power purchase agreement. And really, up until this point, there's no commitment by the town to do us or the program. It's this power purchase agreement that actually is the contract between us and you, and, you know, this is what enables us to go out and pay for the system and get it built. So let me turn, actually, let me pause there and see if there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Emily to talk about the power purchase agreement.
Any questions from anyone on the phone? Hearing none, any questions?
I'm all set, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions in the council chambers? Hearing none, go right ahead, Emily. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mackie. So as Mackie mentioned, Solar Map provides kind of the technical and project development support to use the Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement. That's how we're financing these projects. So there's many ways to go solar. We found that municipalities are attracted to using a power purchase agreement as opposed to actually, you know, purchasing systems themselves or leasing panels. A power purchase agreement is an agreement between the Connecticut Green Bank and, you know, would be the town of Enfield, where the Green Bank is the seller of electricity, and the town of Enfield would be the procure of energy. So under this arrangement, the Green Bank actually owns all of the solar systems. We're responsible for constructing them and monitoring them. And under a power purchase agreement, you're agreeing to buy all of the energy that is generated from these systems on a per kilowatt hour basis at a rate that's discounted from your utility rate. So the town wouldn't be responsible for owning the system, maintaining it, or monitoring it. That would be the responsibility of the Green Bank. And you're just agreeing to buy all the kilowatt hours that are coming off of the system. So just to highlight why this arrangement might be attractive for the town, essentially, you're agreeing to install these systems and get a lower electricity rate. So you're locking in your electricity rate at a lower rate than your utility rate. And these are 20-year agreements, so over the 20-year term, as utility costs continue to rise and your PPA rate stays fixed over that time period, your savings is increasing. And that's illustrated in the chart on the right-hand side. Another benefit is that municipalities can't take advantage of the federal tax credits that are available for these types of projects. So the Connecticut Green Bank, along with our private investor partners, can capture that tax credit, and they can pass on those benefits through lower electricity rates. And we mentioned, you know, there's no operations and maintenance costs, so that gives you peace of mind. These systems are our responsibility to make sure they're running efficiently, because those, you're only agreeing to buy what is generated. So we want to make sure it's generating as we predict. And of course, because we own these systems, we'll be providing all of the upfront capital. And through the Solar Map Program, it's really no obligation as we scope out projects and propose system designs and pricing. And then, of course, we'll be constructing and paying for the systems. We just wanted to highlight another municipality that has taken advantage of the Green Bank Solar Power Purchase Agreement, the town of Coventry. They have eight solar systems that we have financed, six are roof-mounted, and two are carports. So needless to say, they've enjoyed this financing product, and our great case study, sure, the town manager would be happy to speak about their experience through the program. And they actually used our solar PPA prior to us creating the Solar Map Program, where we're supporting towns through, you know, the preliminary steps of looking at solar projects. We recently created the solar municipal assistance program. So as Mackie mentioned, in our first round or our first batch of municipalities, we're working with seven other, seven towns to install 24 projects or 5.3 megawatts of solar. So right now, we're speaking with towns such as Enfield about looking at kind of a second rounds of this program, where we're talking with towns, scoping out projects, understanding what your sustainability goals are. And if the town is interested in participating in the program, this kind of outlines what our next steps are and what our timeline is. Our, the incentives that are available through the state kind of run on an annual basis. So we're preparing for next year's utility incentive program in the spring. So we're speaking with towns and looking at project sites for the next handful of months, developing them to head into that utility program in the spring. So this kind of outlines what the project timeline would be, and of course, we can provide these slides to you so you get a better sense of that. And maybe we'll just stop here to see if there's questions with the program or how the power purchase agreement works, really anything about our presentation so far.
Thank you, Emily. Appreciate it. Any questions from anyone on the phone?
Emily, this is also Susan.
Yeah, Donna, just say your name. Thank you. Go ahead.
Take care of the removal and, I guess, I'm going to say recycle of the solar panels when your useful life is done.
So through the power purchase agreement, at the end of the 20 years, there's three different options for kind of how you could move forward. If the town is, you know, enjoying the generation and wants to continue the power purchase agreement, there's an option to extend it five years. You could also purchase the system outright at a fair market value price, or the Green Bank could come and, you know, remove the system. I don't have too many details on panel removal. I don't think we've reached the end of too many 20-year agreements yet, Mackie, but if you know some details about disposal and recycling, we might have to get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Donna? Anyone else on the phone? Charlotte or, excuse me, Councillor Riley or Councillor Kiner? Any questions in the council chambers? Counselors Sveraza and Councillor Sikala.
Emily, thank you for that presentation, but here's my question. I thought you, if I heard correctly, you said that the, one of the advantages for the town is that we would buy this electricity at a discounted rate from our normal supplier. Is that right?
Correct. We would only be proposing projects where we could deliver energy savings.
And once we negotiate the power agreement and we agree on the price, we're locked into that price for 20 years, correct?
Correct. These are fixed rates, yes.
So what would happen if five years or in year six or seven, ever-source rates somehow were lower than what we negotiated with you? Would we still be locked in at the higher rate?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The 20-year rate that we determine is essentially, you know, we're looking at our cost to build and dividing that over the 20-year period. So we're fixing that rate to be paid back for our capital costs of constructing the system. So you're right, the rate would be locked in for 20 years, you know, regardless of the utility rate. But I'm not, if I had to bet, I wouldn't anticipate utility rates declining over the next 20 years. And it's pretty standard industry practice to use a 3% escalator when determining energy savings. And I believe we use a little bit more conservative of 2% assumption in utility rate escalation.
Okay. This is Mackie. I'll just add, so yeah, the utility rates go up and down, you know, kind of like the weather, hot and cold. But when you look at the trend over time, it has, you know, they're pretty steadily going up. We don't, we don't do a project unless, we'll propose unless, you know, the town, our customer, really pushing hard. We typically won't start unless we can deliver at least a 10% discount to the current rate, just to make sure, you know, what you're talking about, where periodic dips in the price aren't affecting the fact that you're still saving. But you don't tend to see, you know, 10%, 15% drops in electric rates. And again, you know, when you look at historical data, the long-term trend is up. So I think it would be worrisome if we were very close to your existing rate. That is quite likely, actually, that at some point it would drop below that. But I think by starting at at least 10% and oftentimes 20% to 30% below the existing rate, you're insulated from that.
So thank you for that answer. But the short answer to that is that whatever we negotiate, and I know Emily said she bets it probably isn't going to be a problem, but that verbiage makes me uncomfortable when we're committing to town for 20 years. But the succinct, simple answer to this question is, whatever rate we negotiate, when this goes into effect, regardless of what happens with utility rates statewide, if they should go down, we're not getting that. We're going to lock in at what we are on day one, and that's it for 20 years.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sikala.
Thank you.
And Councillor Bosco.
So I have several questions, and what I'm going to do is kind of compare this to how it would work for a homeowner. So the length of the contract would be 20 years. What is, I guess, the shelf life of a solar panel? That's my first question.
The warranties that you get from the manufacturer are typically at least 20 years. So, you know, there's other equipment within, that depends clearly the main, one of the main components of the system. There's some other, one of the other primary pieces is an inverter. Those are warranted typically between 10 and 15 years. And so throughout the term of the PPA, you would expect to have to replace it at least once. But that's a cost that we would bear as the owner of the system.
Okay. So let me ask you this. What would happen if we put it on a building, and then five years down the road, we discover this building is no longer going to be used? What do we do with those panels? What happens if we end the contract early?
Then there's a termination fee.
And how much is that?
It depends on the, how much time is left in the contract. Essentially, the, it's a value, you know, calculated on what you would have paid over the expected term.
Okay, so humor me. I want to cancel the contract 10 years in. Give me an estimation.
I mean, we could get back to you on, you know, the variables are just so wide on, you know, what size system we're talking and everything. But, I mean, you're looking, yeah, I want to second.
Okay, that's fine.
Hundreds of thousands.
Okay. So would you be, let's say we put this on a building or did a canopy carport type of thing, would you be looking to get to 100% of that building's electrical usage to be replaced by solar usage? Are you trying to get to that 100%?
No, we cap the amount of a building's usage that will own a system that will offset at 85%.
Okay, so you cap at 85%. Now, let's, I don't know how to word this correctly to not be confusing, but I know what I would try to say. So how much of the solar energy collected on those panels is going to go to that building versus how much is going to go to the grid?
So it depends on the building and how it's used. I mean, as you can imagine, solar panels produce their electricity when, you know, when the sun's out. So, you know, if it's a school that is, most of its usage is during the day, then when school's in session, typically you will be, instead of putting that power onto the grid, you'll be consuming it onsite. However, during the summer, you're not really, you know, your demand will be much lower in that building, so you'll be putting a lot of it back onto the grid. You know, an office building or a town hall that maybe is open on the weekend, perhaps those usage patterns are pretty steady, so you are consuming most of the power onsite. It really varies based on how the building's used. So that's from an electricity standpoint. From a credit standpoint and the value of the electricity to you, it doesn't really matter whether it's used onsite or put on the grid, because when you put it on the grid, you get credit, you get the bank debt essentially for when you do need it, when the building wouldn't be using electricity.
Right. So in other words, are you saying 100% of that 85% is going to be used on that building?
From a credit, from like a billing perspective, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Not from the actual, when you think about like the, when you're thinking about the actual electrons that the system will produce, no, they won't all actually be used onsite. But you'll, your bill and the economics of the system will be like they are. And that's why we make, that's why we size it 85%, because if you produce more power than you use onsite over the course of a year, then you're not going to get the same value of the electricity from the utility for when you're overproducing. And at that point, you know, what the gentleman earlier was worried about happening, where you would be credited that electricity at a much lower rate than you'd be paying us for it. So we never want that to happen, which is why we're careful about making sure you're going to be able to use all that power that the system produces.
Okay. So you said that this is a fixed rate for 20 years. Is there anything that goes up each year as far as the fees that we would be paying to you? Are there any fees that go up annually?
No. This is not like your electric bill where you have a bunch of different fees that are, you know, that are your charge based upon how much you use. You know, if you look at your bill, you've got generation, you've got transmission, you've got a bunch of public policy charges, all these, all these other things that can, even if your generation were to stay flat, those could change. Power purchase agreement, not like that at all. It's just the price for the electricity, and that is fixed for the term of the contract.
So you mentioned a, like, the tax credit. Would the municipality see 100% of that tax credit? So let's say the tax credit was $10,000. Is that entire $10,000 going to be, I guess, seen or credited to the town, or is Green Bank Solar going to see some of that?
Some of the values, value will be, so we partner with private investors, and there's a particular type of finance built around those tax credits. It's called tax equity. And those tax equity investors, as you can imagine, they, they're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart, so. the goodness of their heart, so they are, they're extracting some value out of the structure. So, no, not 100% of the value is passed on, but some of the value is.
How, can you give me a percentage?
I can't, I, you know, we could look at, well, let me just give you an example. So, I don't know, so the tax credit right now is worth 26% of the overall cost of the system. You get a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for 26% of the cost. So, let's say you build a $100,000 system, $26,000, somebody gets to reduce their tax. Next year, that goes down to 22%. If you look at the PPA rate that you would be able to get this year, the 26% year versus the 22% year, your PPA rate is going to go up by somewhere between like half a penny and a penny. So, you know, just, and that's a 4% difference in that tax credit. So, you know, it does make a big difference if that incentive goes down. And, you know, I think a lot of the value is being passed on, because when it goes down even just a little bit, you're, you know, you see a big hit to the PPA rate you get. But, yeah, I mean, to cut right to the heart of your question, you're not getting 100% of the value.
Right, okay. All right, last question, thank you for indulging me. So, let's say you put it on a town building, and then we need to do some roof repairs. Who pays for the panels to come down and then back up?
You do. So, that's one of the key things we look at early on in that process we just outlined, is how old are those roofs? Because we don't want to put it on a roof that's, you know, 10 or 10 or more years old. You want to have enough remaining life in that roof for the, at least the term of the PPA.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bosco.
Yeah, I apologize, I walked in late, but there were two things you were talking about. One, I guess, if we purchased them or whatever, and then buying the credits from someone else, which I think we tried doing before. But one of the big things on my bill is the delivery rate. How's that going to work if we decide to go either way with this?
So, you're, I have to make some guesses, but I assume you're, you're, you're talking about at your home?
Well, whatever, I mean, at my home, my business, I'm sure that the town has to pay a delivery rate. And I don't think Eversource is going to give them a free ride on that, so someone has to pay a delivery rate. So, are we still going to get a delivery rate on the, maybe we won't get a delivery rate on the stuff that we make off of our roof, but once it goes out into the system, are we going to pay a delivery rate to get it back?
Right, so, the, there are two types of charges on your bill. Not so much the residential one, but on a municipal or commercial bill. One is what you're billed by the kilowatt hour, so that's how much you actually consume. And then the other is based upon kilowatt, your demand.
Right, that was my next question on the demand, how you pay on demand.
Yep, so your home bills are typically, for the most part, all kilowatt-hour based. You've got some fixed charges that you're going to get charged no matter how much you use, but pretty much everything is, you know, based on how much you use. Most likely, your municipal buildings, you've got your kilowatt usage, and a lot of some of those are delivery fees, what you're referencing. So, for the, let's say you put solar on the municipal building, you're going to, you're going to buy a kilowatt hour from the solar system at whatever, you know, eight cents a kilowatt hour, let's just say. And then, so you're avoiding purchasing that kilowatt hour from your utility. And if you purchase that kilowatt hour from your utility, you want to pay whatever they charge for the electricity, the generation, 10 cents, plus everything else you're referencing, whatever else they charge by the kilowatt hour, so the transmission, the delivery, anything on that bill that stacks up on top of the generation, you're avoiding that charge per kilowatt hour for every kilowatt hour of solar you pay or you buy. So, you're avoiding those charges for every, every kilowatt hour you can get from the solar system.
But the question is, the question is that you didn't answer. So, in this winter, when we are not producing much power, do we get a credit on the delivery charge? Or do we have to pay the whole delivery charge when we don't? Or if even in the summer, we use a little more electricity than what we're producing, we're still going to end up paying the delivery charge if we don't use it on Monday and we need, you know, we have enough, we have overabundance on Monday, but on Tuesday, we need more power, so we're going to get stuck paying the delivery charge on that little piece we didn't use, right?
Nope, you don't. So, go back to my example, let's say you buy a kilowatt hour from us at eight cents, but it's on the Sunday at school and you don't need it. So, it goes to the grid. And then on Monday, when you come in and, let's say it's cloudy and you turn the lights on, so you need to pull that down, you're, instead of buying a kilowatt hour from the utility on Monday morning for their 10 cent generation plus everything on top of it, the transmission, the delivery, you'll pull your credit down on the solar, which will be worth the full value of everything, generation, transmission, delivery, everything that they bill on a kilowatt hour basis. When you pull that solar credit down, will, it will reflect the full value of that, what it would have cost you to buy a kilowatt hour from them.
So, you're banking your kilowatt hours, you're banking your delivery charges, you're banking anything else that would associate it for a charge upon, you know, with that?
Correct. That's why when we do our savings comparison for you, we're going to compare the PPA rate, not just to your generation rate, but to everything else that's billed on a kilowatt hour basis, transmission, delivery, the FMCC, the systems benefit charge, all that stuff that's billed kilowatt hour base, you get credited for that, for your solar electricity when you, when you bank it.
And what about demand?
So, demand, no, we don't factor in any savings there, because they get you there, because that's based on whenever, whatever 15-minute period your building is pulling the most electricity, that sets your demand charge, so.
So, even if we're making the electricity, we still have to pay the demand charge?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, when we do our savings analysis, we don't, you might reduce your demand charge a little bit, but we're not going to count on that because it's not guaranteed. So, when we do the savings analysis, we don't factor that in at all.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Hemler.
You said you were working with some other towns. Can you tell us what towns you're working with?
Yes, Emily, you want to go through?
Sure. It would be Branford, Bolton, Woodbridge, Portland, Manchester, Mansfield, missing one. The top quiz.
Groton.
Groton, thank you.
I have to go to the list.
Thank you.
Counselor Angier.
Counselor Sikala asked all my questions.
Counselor Muller.
I had a quick question, a couple. Connecticut Green Bank does several state agencies. What's the difference between the state agency layout and the layout you're doing for the municipalities? Also, you included all maintenance, the inverters, everything, like it wouldn't need Sunday hours. No one would have to come in on a Sunday. If town hall's closed, you wouldn't need access to the roof or anything. Thank you.
That's correct. We would own in, it's all covered by us.
Speak, Mackie.
Sorry about that, sorry. Yeah, so all the costs are covered by us, and then we would work with you. We do regular, when I say regular, at least once annually preventive maintenance, and we would schedule that with y'all.
During normal hours?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And then, your first question about the layouts for the state project, what do you mean exactly by layout?
We have Connecticut Green Bank for some state agencies as well. Is the layout the same for the municipalities? The deal the same? Like, you don't list the state agencies you do as well, you just say municipalities?
Yeah, so this program actually grew out of what we're doing with the state. They weren't doing solar projects, and so we stepped in to help them get projects done, and over the course, and really to do this exact thing, which we're actually now, we call it SolarMATH for the state.
And how many state agencies?
Right now, we're actually in Enfield. We're working with the Department of Corrections, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and Department of Administrative Services in the first round of projects. And we're, I got a second round with the technical high schools, Department of Transportation, and some other deep sites.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just had a quick question. Curious, is this just for government agencies, or is there, is this like the public could actually tap into it, residents?
So, we started with the state, as I mentioned, and then we offered it to municipalities, and the first round has gone well. And, you know, there's, that's an interest, so we're working on a similar program to the multifamily sector.
So, is there a way to negotiate through the 20-year, or even if we signed up for a 20-year deal, then we decided we wanted to open it up to our residents or our businesses or both, can that deal be altered? So, yeah, I agree with the philosophy of doing this, but at some point, we got to come up with some energy that actually allows our residents to save some money, and again, help the environment as well, not just the municipalities. So, I'm just curious if that is part of your long-term plan, or it's not, or just simply, you know, you're trying to get government agencies to convert over?
No, we have programs for homes, for businesses, nonprofits, really any, any type of building in Connecticut, we have programs to help them go solar, so.
Could we, could the town actually construct a program that actually our residents and businesses could tap into, or does it have to be separate?
I think it would need, just trying to think it through.
And I guess where I'm going is, you know, for the environment, it'd compete with, you know, the cost of electricity, which a lot of folks just got their bill over the summer from Eversource. You know, is there a way to construct some sort of green power plant where we can actually, the town can actually run or work within Green Banks or federal loans, where we can actually control the production?
Gotcha. So, yeah, so right now, it's not, Green Bank couldn't, it's not money that's the problem there, it's sort of the regulatory and policy structure. So, I mean, we're, this program, we're trying to build solar systems to power your municipal buildings. Just the way it's sort of solar policy is in Connecticut, we can't build a big system on any open land.
Is that, that's a state regulation or federal regulation, or both?
It's, it's more the lack of way in Connecticut to incentivize those projects to get built there, right? There is, you might have folks, our solar developers coming to you, talking about virtual net metering.
Right, right.
That's a, that's a program which can benefit municipalities.
So, for me, I mean, I think this is a great idea, but for me, I think it needs to be bigger for me, meaning it needs to be where we can actually have our residents benefit and our businesses who are paying, again, as we're going through, you know, very difficult economic times, if the town's going to benefit from solar energy, we'd be, we love to be able to have, you know, our residents and our businesses do the same. So, I don't know if that's out of your scope or something we can talk through in the future, but I really think that's, that's really where it needs to go, in my opinion, especially when you're talking about getting surrounding towns. I mean, if we had a, some sort of solar power plant in Enfield, you could easily go, you could connect Suffield, Windsor Locks, Summers, all these other surrounding towns, and now you have a regional grid, so to speak. I guess for me, I would like to see that as part of this, because it really has to get to that level, if you know what I mean? I mean, at some point, it has to go more where, you know, again, it's you save some money over a number of years, but it has to be, I think, to a level where we need, right, exactly, I guess that's my, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we can't help, we can't help with exactly what you're talking about, that's, you know, we got to push at the state policy level for that, but we can help scale the behind-the-meter, which is what we're talking about, where you're putting solar on individual buildings, whether they're municipal or your residents or your businesses. We have programs to help residents and businesses.
And we could.
And it's just a matter of scaling, and we'd love to.
Right, because we would, I would want to negotiate that in, so our residents, if they chose to, or the businesses could try, take advantage of, hopefully would be leverage or some sort of economies of scale that the town could bring. Yeah, I think to Counselor Sikala's question, I mean, we do have some issues with roofs with some of our schools that this may not, you know, benefit from just now until we get them fixed. But I think there's other ways we could generate this, you know, again, through the, through our businesses and our residents, if they chose to participate, you know, because I think, again, I just think it needs to be broader than just municipal buildings, in my opinion. That's only my, it's not a criticism, it's just, you know, I would like to see us be able to pull that off at some point in the near future.
Yes, we'd love to work with you on campaigns and do that.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I make a comment?
Sorry, go ahead, yep.
Okay, it's time to zoom out in TV land, so to speak. Okay, I guess, I appreciate, Mike, your enthusiasm, but they came, Green Bank came before facilities, and part of why we've been working so diligently to, at the Henry Byrne School, get that roof complete, is because we would like for Green Bank to look at a project for us, because under our privy, we have the people from solar energy, the clean energy committee that we had. And I think that, you know, I'm always a person, I like to start small before I go big, because I can't, I have to feel comfortable with what I can control. And I think there's a couple of things that Green Bank could really help us to understand. I mean, we've looked at the, you know, the virtual net metering, this is more, I guess, zero net metering. You know, I wish Melissa, I had Melissa's brainpower here as to explain these things. But I think the big thing that Green Bank brings to us is that they can do a full analysis of a site and tell us if it is a site that is a possibility that we can save money and lower our carbon footprint. I think we've also dealt with Green Bank before all this stuff, where we would get credits and get things. So, there, municipalities have benefited from Green Bank, specifically Enfield, from the previous programs. So, I guess this is truly why the Facilities Committee and Kasha, you know, have asked for this to come forward. And I love the enthusiasm of doing everything for everybody, but we did have, you know, CT Solar, which solarized a lot of our residential, and the residential people are capable of getting the government credits that municipalities and from why probably commercial do not benefit from. So, I just wanted to clarify, you know, why we brought this presentation forward for facilities.
Any other questions? Thank you. Counselor Mangi.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think I just want to dovetail with Donna's questions and responses, I do agree with starting small. But what I'd like to find out is a possibility that the company could identify a building, and if so, would there be a cost to our town to do that? And then, secondly, I'd like to see a potential draft of a contract to see where we are with that, and what the detail would look like in the contract itself. I mean, I understand, you know, contract itself. I mean, I understand, you know, that you've answered the questions about, you know, what our town would be responsible for, but I think I'd like to see a draft of a contract, if that's possible. Thank you.
Sure. The project steps with SolarMap is kind of starting with a, with a desktop review, or 30,000-foot review of all the buildings that you guys are interested in, and then zeroing in from there, working with stakeholders on the municipal side to get the green light all the way through. So eventually, we would come to you with a project proposal, pricing proposal, with no obligation and no cost, and we've got a template power purchase agreement that can be shared.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and we have to wrap this up. So anything, Emily and Mackie, again, we appreciate you being here, any closing thoughts or comments?
Well, we thank you all for your time, and of course, we can provide the slides, and happy to answer follow-up questions directly, or set up a meeting for further discussion.
Great. Thank you both for being here, we really appreciate it, it was very informative, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Moving over to item three, any agenda executive session, making sure we have a motion to move an executive session.
Both.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ungary, all those in favor by saying aye. Oppose, abstention, all 11 in favor, zero against.
Welcome everyone. Tonight is Monday, October 5th, 2020. We are at 7:16 of the regular Town Council meeting. Up first is a public hearing for the solid waste ordinance. October, um, sorry Suzanne, roll call please.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
Councilor Saccala.
Here.
Councilor Handler.
Here.
Councilor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Muller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
Councilor Sparazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Undire.
Here.
This is all the members present.
Thank you Suzanne. Due to the COVID-19 public health emergency and pursuant to Governor Lamont's executive orders, public comment and proposed amendments to the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 30, solid waste and recycling ordinance was received by written testimony only. Electors or taxpayers submitted comments to an email address dedicated to receiving public comments at phcomments@enfield.org by 5 o'clock on September 30, 2020. All public comments received and posted were posted on the town's website under Town Council. We received 13 public comments and proposed amendments to the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 30, solid waste and recycling ordinance. In full disclosure, majority of them were not in favor of the changes to be up front, but they are part of your packet, are part of the public record and also included on our town, uh, town website. Uh, some councilors may make some comments in their councilor communications on this. I declared a public communications, uh, public, excuse me, public hearing closed. Moving on to the regular meeting. Item one, prayer. Councilor Sparazza, please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your blessing, your guidance and your wisdom as we conduct the business of this community. We ask you to help us to make our decisions for the benefit of all of our citizens with equity and fairness for all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Suzanne, roll call please.
Councilor Sparazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Councilor Undire.
Here.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
Councilor Saccala.
Here.
Councilor Handler.
Here.
Councilor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Muller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
There's 11 members present.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item four, under the regular agenda, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, the door is right behind us to your left and your right are open. That'd be our first exit out the door. Or we could go to the doors to our left, down, right out to the first door to the, to the left, out those doors, down the stairs and out into the parking lot, in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, minutes of proceeding minutes, special meeting September 8, 2020, special meeting September 21st, 2020. And irregular meeting September 21st, 2020, do I have a motion to approve? By Councilor Muller, second and by Councilor Mangini. Is there any corrections, deletions, um, additions to any of the minutes listed? Hearing done by Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Suzanne, we have 11 in favor and zero against.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, any agenda, special guests? We have none tonight.
No, and Mr. Uh, Mayor, I would just ask that for our guests or our participants at home to mute themselves. I've gotten feedback from our control center that we're getting a lot of feedback from those. Thank you Donna, thank you Bill. And you were already in compliance Charlotte, but thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. No, no special guests this evening.
And we move on to item seven, public communications. Anyone like to speak for the Town Council at this time? Anyone like to speak for the Town Council at this time? Hearing done, I declare public communications closed. Moving on to item- public communications closed. Moving on to item eight, council communications. Any councilor like to speak? Councilor Mangini.
Thank you. On behalf of the Enfield Rotary, I'm the president, but I've also got two other Rotarians with me here tonight. I have Lori Ungary, and I have Joe Mueller. And I want to especially thank Joe Mueller for accompanying me to Springfield earlier, before we came to our council meeting. Rotary International has been given, through the courtesy of the Rossi family, million mask challenge. I asked for 1,000 face masks for our town, and I'm going to work with our town manager, Chris, I know this is a surprise to you, but we have 1,000 in Joe's truck. And we're going to, our Rotary Club has agreed to donate these masks to our essential workers, our first responders, and I need to find out, Chris, who you, you know, as our, you know, director of our town, can designate, you know, the first ones to receive. And, you know, once we get through the 1,000, you know, we will have accomplished our goal. But I just think it's important to work with the town to figure out the importance of who gets, you know, the masks, and we'll go down the list. So at some point, maybe I can reach out to your office tomorrow, and we'll establish that. And then, once we establish that, then Rotary, our Rotary Club, will put together a team, and we'll figure out how to, you know, sort these out or deliver, either directly through the town to you, or if you prefer, we can distribute. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Certainly, we have a protocol that we've been following with distribution from private sources in the state, through Steve Hall and some of our volunteers with Crest, and also, we had discussed, and perhaps it would be viable as well, to distribute them through the Enfield Express, where people can drive through, and we can have them obtain them right from a car. But we can work on logistics tomorrow. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for your help with getting the boxes and whatnot. And Lori, thank you for being Rotarian.
Thank you, Councilor Mangini. Any other comments from anyone? Councilor Bosco.
Yeah, I want to start by saying thank you to everyone that sent a letter, a phone call, a chat on the trash ordinance. There's a lot of misconception about this ordinance. On the second barrel, you know, people are worried about their second barrel. Well, holidays, you're going to be able to use your second barrel that you already have. The, and also, I want to let everyone know, this is not going to happen today. We are going to vet this out very well. I encourage anyone that has any questions to give either me or Councilor, Deputy Mayor Suzak, a call, because we can explain it to you. I heard this morning that someone told me that, you know, we're going to limit the residents to one barrel, but let the businesses have 13. So when I was talking about, we had businesses that have 13 tipper barrels. That's not how it's going to work. The businesses are also going to be limited to one. The big thing is, people are saying, well, we're going to charge them a tax on the trash. That's further from the truth. The problem that we have right now, we, we did it out for five years. If we do not reduce the amount of trash, and what's happening is, every year, it's steadily going up. So we're going to use the same number of tons that we take today, and say we're not going to produce anymore. At the end of five years, we'll be paying $228,000 additional in fees, and they're only going to increase. So what's got to happen is, we got to reduce the amount of trash. And, you know, with people saying that this is going to be a tax, well, the real thing is, no, it's not, because I'm going to say probably 85 or 90% of the people can get away with one tipper barrel. The problem's going to be, when we do $228,000, that's probably somewhere on an eighth of a mil, that everybody's going to have to pay. And then, we get the letters saying that, you know, my taxes went up. Well, everybody, and every time, everyone in household has, things have gone up. It's not a town of Enfield problem, it's a state of Connecticut problem. And your electricity's gone up, and your heat's gone up, and your food has gone up. Well, the same things happen to the town. We have costs, we have contracts, we have heat, we have electricity, we have roofs that we need to replace, we have roads that have to be plowed. So our costs go up every year. And all of us councilors here have to pay the same increase that everybody else is doing. So I'm sure that if one of us vote to pay more money, it's needed. And like I've said before, you know, I want people to understand, every year, we have an automatic half to three quarters of a mil increase built into your taxes on stuff that costs us more money. So the only way we can do this is to reduce the cost. And what happened was, we started looking at the private trash industry. When, this is, we've been actually talking about this probably for three, four years. A year ago, we got really dedicated on trying to figure this out. So we asked about, what would it cost if we went private? Because a lot of people are saying, we should go private, because it's going to lower our costs. Well, it's further from the truth. We went to towns our size that have trash companies doing their trash that are private, and the cost for labor, against labor, is pretty close. I mean, we're paying a tad bit more than some of them, but we also get a lot more services out of our employees. The funny thing was, the difference was, the towns that have private trash hauled a lot less trash. And there are similar towns. So why? So you look into it, and our recycling numbers have been going down. And we need to recycle more so we can get it out of the trash stream, so we can bring the cost down for everybody. And that's where we got this. So then, we checked. Some towns, you get your first barrel at the amount that the trash company charges, or what the town is contract for, and you're paying $300 a barrel for that second barrel. So this is not something new that we're doing compared to what other towns are doing. We have to get a handle on it, and that's what you put us here for. Because if we don't start looking at how to cut costs, the taxes are going to go crazy, and it, things are just going to get worse. So I just want to let everyone know, this has not been, this has not been done willy-nilly. This is not the final thing. They're going to keep having hearings, and I, I just ask people, please, call us, email us, let us know your concerns. You know, I got a couple emails with no phone number, and I asked the people to give me a call, and I got no call. Because what's happening is, what they're saying is not accurate. What they're hearing is not accurate. So get ahold of one of us, call the town manager's office, you'll find what, what is actually the truth. So, like I said, the second barrel, you're going to be able to use for the holidays. Someone sent an email saying about the recycling, the ordinance said weekly, and it's still going to stay bi-weekly. I got one person that says they put out a lot of trash, and their tipper barrel for recycling is full. Well, you can have another tipper barrel for recycling. According to this ordinance, you'll get three tipper barrels for recycling. And after the third barrel, we're just going to make sure you're cutting up your cardboard correctly, and using your recycling correctly, which would get that person less barrels, because he's going to be putting more into the recycling. Another one that has really nothing to do with the trash ordinance, you know, someone says, are we going to have the Lewiston Maine bill for the extra tipper barrel? Well, I know this has been a problem right along. Lewiston, Maine is a clearinghouse for us, which actually saves us money, because there's no charge for them to put the money back into our account, the checks. So when we send them off to Lewiston, there's no cost for that. So, you know, I read all these comments, and I'm trying to hit as many of them that I could, could see. The yard waste, yard waste is pretty much going to stay the same, except in the summer. In the summer, you're going to be limited to barrels. And we had done a thing a couple years ago on mulching and recycling your yard waste, and it's very beneficial. So we're going to, I was talking to the mayor, and what we're going to want to do is a bunch of educational videos, we're going to start with the kids in school on recycling, and this thing may take six months to go through. But the only way we're going to make it right is with people not complaining, people asking the right questions. And you know what? There were things in here that I never, I never think. I had one person call, they're handicapped, and they can't carry 196-gallon tipper out, they need two smaller ones. Was a perfect thing. So, you know, we got to try to work with everybody, and try to make this so it is less painful as many people as possible. But please, ask the question, don't go on Facebook and just talk about things you don't know. The ordinance is pretty clear, and if you have any questions, contact one of us. And if you don't get the answer you like, then go on Facebook, and then you'll have the real truth. So that's, that's what I have to say, and thank you. And again, this is not going to get passed immediately, so people don't need to worry about it. But we can't make this work and work properly without the help of all the taxpayers, and business owners, and residents of Enfield, to put their contact in. And we're going to make this as transparent as possible. And I just say, you know, come to, come to the meetings and tell us what your concerns are. And yes, we will listen, and we will make the right decision for the town, and for your, our future, our kids' futures, and anyone else that wants to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bosco. Councilor Ungary.
Thank you. Piggybacking on what Joey has said, this is really just starting the discussion about all this trash ordinance. What I understand is that there have been people on this committee that have been working for years, trying to come up with a better solution and a resolution. So we're just letting the public know, and we're still in discussions about it. What people don't realize, our transfer station here in Enfield is just that, transfer. We, things are brought in, and then it's transferred somewhere else. So our costs are going up and up. And so we're trying to figure the best way to manage our expenses. So we're just continuing this conversation. On a positive note, I wanted to mention, congratulations to Jamie Hurley from the Hazardville Fire Department. He actually came up with the idea to add some culture and beautify Enfield by having the fire hydrants painted. And so they had a big contest, and I guess there were a couple dozen hydrants that were painted, and they gave awards, and it's just going to beautify Enfield a little bit more. So kudos to him. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from folks on the phone?
I just, I want to, you know, Joey, great job summarizing everything. I guess there also will be, part of this ordinance is to start to enforce people properly putting out their trash barrels, the timeframe, and not allowing them to, you know, sit on the sidewalks and in the row, week after week. I guess one of the things that, you know, there's no fee for owning the second barrel, as Joey has said, that you can use that after a holiday. The fee would come if you weekly want to be able to use that. And that is not a property tax. That is a, that's just a usage fee. And, you know, I just want to reiterate over, you know, what Joey said, the cost is not the cost to pick up the barrel. And as Lori said, the cost is to dispose of it, because it's just transferring it, you know, and those costs are going to go up. And I think we need to ask questions, and we need to, you know, if we, if our gray barrels are full and our blue barrel isn't, we need to ask for help. So we better understand how we recycle and how we do things. So, and as far as timeframe, I mean, this was presented on the 22nd of September. I know it hit the town webpage on the 29th or the 28th, but it was available through YouTube and other means. So I don't know, you know, 13 comments is, is a great, you know, cross-section. And if someone, one of the questions somebody had was, how much does, we have no fee to pick up trash for the Board of Ed, but we do own the buildings. And I don't know if that's something that someone could explain to our citizen that asked that question. And other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in, I'm sorry, I'm in virtual world, sorry, lost my mind. Councilor Kiner or Councilor Riley?
I have no comments.
Thank you, I want to make sure, sorry. Councilor Mangini.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bosco, for your synopsis, and Deputy Mayor Suzak. I also am on that subcommittee, but I'm happy that we are going to be reconvening, if I'm not misunderstanding, so that we can go over more information and vet out more of the concerns of the residents. I think that's a good thing. I do have some outstanding concerns, which you both are aware of. But I think that, especially, you know, receiving the emails that we have, and Joey, I think you synopseized them pretty well, it's important for our little, you know, committee to review and to try and understand, you know, where the residents are coming from. So thank you for doing that. And I'm looking, actually looking forward to the next subcommittee meeting, so we can, you know, look at more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Muller.
I want to give a quick shout out to Connie Provantia and the ERFC for a wonderful farm-to-table event this past weekend on the town green. Several of us attended the early seating. It was a great event, and we had great food. It was a good time. I make a motion to suspend the rules and move items B5, B6, B7, EF, J, K, L, and M to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion made to suspend the rules and move the items to miscellaneous by Councilor Muller. Do I have a second? Councilor Sparazza, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? We have 11 in favor, zero against. Anyone else have any comments? Real quick, two quick, I just want to thank Bob Marshall and the good folks from Optum for cleaning up the dog park, and they were successful. Again, again, we talk about private-public partnerships. They did a great job. Councilwoman Mangini was there, and the park is open now, which is great after the, you know, the storm damage. Kudos to Optum, their employees. Of course, we all know, a great company is only great because they have great employees. And there's another example of it. And I just want to say in closing, the Halloween decorations all over town are awesome. And it's just great to be in a town that still celebrates the little things, and Halloween is important, in my opinion. It's a fun holiday for our children, and it's great to see people putting up so many unique displays and, and things throughout town. Really adds to the, the character of our town. So good job to everyone who's doing it. Moving on to item nine, Town Manager Report, sir.
Other than answering any questions the council may have, I would just state that, due to popular demand, the farmer's market will continue through the end of October. It will be this coming Sunday, October 11th, the following Sunday, October 18th, and then concluding on October 25th. It's 10 to 2 p.m. Both residents and vendors requested that we extend it. So I'm glad it was such a success. I hope for good weather like this, and I think we'll have a good turnout. But it's nice to see that it was something our residents wanted us to continue a month longer than it was scheduled. So I thank everyone who was involved in organizing it, volunteers who came to participate in it, and most of all, our residents, who came and purchased and supported the vendors, who in many cases on Sundays sold out their goods, their ware. So it's a good, strong showing. We had, again, almost 80 vendors last week. I don't know how many we'll have going forward. Most of them indicated they wanted to stay. So come on out and join us this Sunday, 10 to 2. Would like to see you there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Town Manager? Any questions from the virtual world for the Town Manager? Seeing head shakes, I can see it, none? Chris, I had, sorry, one quick question, I just lost my mind. I didn't lose my mind, but I closely lost my mind. I had a quick, sorry, I forgot my question. Sorry. Moving on to Town, item 10, Town Attorney Report.
There's nothing to report publicly, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, any reports of special committees by the Town Council? Anyone from the virtual space, any reports of special committees? Shake your head, I can see it, nope. Anyone on the council floor, any reports of special committees? Hearing none, we move on to item 12, old business, page one, excuse me, items A, 1, 2, and 3, we have none. Items 4, 5, 6, and we have none. Items 4, 5, 6, and 7, we have none. Do I have a motion to remove item 8 from the table, the Inland and Wetlands Agency vacancy?
Some move.
By Council Muller. Second by Council Sakala. By show of hands, all those in favor removing from the table? Opposed, abstentions, we have 11 in favor and zero against, remove from the table. Do I have a nomination, please? Counselor Hemler?
I'd like to nominate Robert Hendrickson.
Nomination made.
Second.
Second by Council Muller. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
By Counselor Sparazza. By Counselor Sakala. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands or an eye. All those opposed, I have 11 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Robert Hendrickson.
Oh.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Robert Hendrickson.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley. Four. There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving, items 9, 10, 11, stay on the table. Under Old Business, under Old Business, item B, appointments by the Town Manager, 1 through 5, we have none. Moving on to the top of page 3, under Old Business, items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 through 16, again, none under Old Business from the Town Manager appointments. Item C, appointments P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, Council-approved, we have none. Moving on to item 13, New Business, items A, we have no consent agenda under New Business. We have item B, appointments by Town Council, we have none. Item C, under New Business, appointments by the Town Manager, we have none. Item D, P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, Council-approved, under New Business, again, we have none. We move up to the top of page 4. Items for Discussion, again, item A, Consent Agenda, we have none. Appointments B, under Appointments B, Town Council-appointed. Items 1, 2, and 3 are just notices of vacancy. 5, 6, and 7 have already been moved to miscellaneous. Item C, appointments by the Town Manager, Council-appointed, Manager-appointed, Council-approved, we have none. Item D, P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, Council-approved, we have none. Items G, H, and I that are on the agenda under Items for Discussion will remain on the table. It will become New Business at our next October meeting. Moving on to miscellaneous. Sorry, let me get to the item B5, which is the JFK, JFK School Renovation Building Committee. A resignation was received, and we have, do I have a nomination for item 5?
Yes, Todd Kinnon.
I have a nomination of, made by Council Muller. Do I have a second by Counselor Sakala? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
By Council Muller?
Second.
Second by Council Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Opposed, we have 11 in favor, zero against. Do I, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Please, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek. Todd Keen. Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
He stepped out.
Oh, thank you. Counselor Sakala.
Todd Kinnon.
And Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Todd Kinnon.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Under Miscellaneous, item B6, the JFK School Innovation Building Committee, again, we have a vacancy. And would someone please make a nomination?
Christine DeBoni.
Uh, nomination made by Council Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Sakala. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
By Council Muller?
Second.
Second by Council Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Those opposed, any abstentions? We have 11 in favor, Suzanne, zero against. Any, or excuse me, 10 in favor, zero against. We have any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Christine DeBoni.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
He's, again, absent.
Still out? Okay. Counselor Sakala.
Christine DeBoni.
And Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Christine DeBoni.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on, again, under Miscellaneous, B7, JFK School Innovation Building Committee, there is an alternate vacancy. Do I have a nomination, please?
Andrew LaPlante.
Nomination made by Council Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Sakala. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
Council Muller, second by Counselor Sparazza. All those in favor of closing nominations, by show of hands. Those opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against, Suzanne. And do we have any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Andrew LaPlante.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
I take it Counselor Bosco's still out.
He's still here. Go ahead, Joe.
Four.
Four.
Thank you. And Counselor Sakala.
Andrew LaPlante.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Deputy Mayor, all right, sorry, Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Andrew LaPlante.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item E, under Miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Request to Transfer Funds for the Town Clerk's Office of $12,428. Resolve that in accordance Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Human Resources, Other Professional Services of 22, oh, sorry, wrong one. All right. Hold on, do I, I'm sorry about that. I need to, I need to reread, sorry about that. I will reread the resolution. Resolve in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To the Town Clerk's Office of $12,428. $28 from other revenue of grant to COVID federal of $12,428. Certified that the above amount is available on September 25, 2020 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by the Town Manager, Chris Bronson.
Some move.
By Council Muller, second by Council Mangini. Pretty straightforward with absentee ballots. I don't, Suzanne, is Suzanne on, or Chris?
Suzanne's on, but it is self-explanatory. There's no budget impact. This is a transfer. We received that 12,000 plus from a state grant. Suzanne will spend it on the record-breaking number of absentee ballots that need to be processed, including part-time help, postage, and the like in handling that. She and her staff have been doing an incredible job. It has been a huge increase, obviously, given the circumstances we find ourselves. I thank her for her hard work, and that of the registrars. It has been truly challenging, and they are up to the challenge.
Thank you, sir. Suzanne, just want to make sure you're on. If you have any comments or, or, I mean, things you'd like to make a comment on?
Well, no, just that this will help us, especially the extra money for the part-time help that we're getting. We just had two more people come in today to help us with this and get started, so.
Awesome.
It's making us feel better.
Thank you, Suzanne. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from anyone on the council? Anyone out in virtual land? Shaking a head, I see none. Okay, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item F, under Miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Request to Transfer Funds for Human Resources of $22,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To Human Resources, Other Professional Services of $22,000. From non-departmental charge of unallocated contingency of $22,000. Certified that the above funds are available as of October 5, 2020, by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by our Town Manager, Chris Bronson.
Some move.
By Council Muller, second by Council Mangini. Yeah, another quick, yeah?
No, just briefly, this is to allow the Human Resource Director to pay for HR.gov to do the manager recruitment. The application process will close October 16th, and then after that period of time, he'll have a report with the consultant to the Executive Search Committee sometime in the week or so following that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from anyone on the council? Any questions from counselors out in virtual land? Seeing shakes, it ahead, none. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. We moved item J, under Miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, A Resolution Appointing Town Manager for the Town of Enfield. Resolve that pursuant of Chapter, Chapter 4, Section 1 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint Christopher W. Bronson as the Town Manager. His, his terms shall become effective on August 16, 2020, and end when a new permanent full-time appointed Town Manager commences employment with the town.
Some move.
By Council Muller?
Second.
By Council Mangini. Fairly straightforward, folks. I don't know if anyone has any questions or any comments. Anyone out on virtual land? Shake it ahead, none? None. Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley? Four. There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Again, item K, under Miscellaneous, Discussion Resolution, Resolution to Reprove the Proposed Pay Raises for Summer, Seasonal, and Temporary Employees in our Recreation Department. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 5, Section, oh, that's a tough one, 10, 15, 14. All right, am I right on that one? Section 14, if I'm wrong, I apologize.
14.
14, and look at that. Of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the pay raises for Summer, Seasonal, and Temporary Employees in the Recreation Division effective September 1, 2020. Attached is the seasonal summer temporary employee pay raises for the Recreation Division effective on September 1, 2020, submitted on September 21, 2020 by Steve Blinder, our Director of Human Resources.
Some moved.
By Council Mangini, second by Council Muller. Again, pretty straightforward, you know, resolution. It's already part of our budget, and, yeah, I think this was part of the minimum wage increase that the state passed.
That's correct. Mary Keller is on, but we list all of the impacted positions. We normally do that yearly, but the new seasonal pay rates in June, they were adopted before the new minimum, minimum wage rates became effective September 1 of 2020 to $12 an hour. So this is putting everything in accordance with that to comply with state law.
Thank you, sir. Mary, I know you're on. Just want to make sure, because you're on, if you have any comments or, or, you know, things you'd like to say, I want to make sure you have the opportunity.
Thank you. We just want to stay competitive, to make sure that our seasonal and temporary staff have the ability to stay competitive with our pay rates, and that we don't lose them to other towns or other jobs. We require them to have a lot of certification and a lot of training, and we would like to be able to continue to keep them with us and continue to be competitive in recruiting new staff.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it. Any comments from counselors in the virtual world? Seeing the shakes ahead, none. Any comments from the Town Council in the chambers? Seeing none, roll call, please, Suzanne.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item L, Discussion Resolution, Resolution Increasing the Register of Voter Election Workers' Rate of Pay. Be it resolved in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 14 of the Town Charter, the rates of pay for the following election workers will be increased to the following. Checkers, ballot clerks, tabular tenders, and demonstrators, $13 per hour effective, $13 per hour effective September 1, 2020. Be it further resolved in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 14 of the Town Charter, the rates of pay of the following election workers will be increased to the following. Moderators, 1, 2020, $18 per hour effective September 1. Assistant registrars and moderators, $15 per hour effective September 1, 2020. Head moderator, $21 per hour effective September 1, 2020.
Some move.
By Council Muller, second by Council Mangini. Again, I think coming through the minimum wage from the state, and, you know, again, in our budget, part of our budget.
This, this was budgeted for, and the registrars then come back to us for your approval.
Any, any questions or comments from the virtual world, our counselors? Shaking your head, see none. Any comments from folks in the chambers? Seeing none, Suzanne, roll call, please.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzek.
Four.
Counselor Ungar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Muller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
There's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item M, Discussion Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Make the Application for the Connectivity Grant Program, also known as CCPG, whereas federal monies are available for targeted small-scale infrastructure improvements to improve accommodations to bikeless and pedestrians under the Connecticut Community Connectivity Program administered by the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation, also known as DOT. Now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council that the Town Manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit the grant application subject to review by the Town Attorney in the name on behalf of the Town of Enfield on September 20, prepared on September 25, 2020 by our Assistant Town Manager, Casia Purcell.
Some moved.
By Council Muller, second by Council Mangini.
Yes, briefly, this is coming on an expedited basis because I believe the deadline for the application is fast upon us. I think, Kasia, it's the 15th. If I'm correct, she's going to give a little synopsis. This is, again, the handiwork of Nelson Torezio, the Deputy Director in Finding and Applying for Grant Money. This is a continuation of a gap in our sidewalk program. So for $400,000, Kasia can give you the specifics of where and when, but basically, they only pay for the actual building, so the additional cost for the design would have to be borne by the town. It's approximately 10% of that, around 40 to 50 grand. Donald has it, I believe, in what, in our budget that we have for architectural and engineering, just for this purpose, in case these things or projects or opportunities come up during the year. But Kasia, would you like to give a little thumbnail sketch for the council, please?
Welcome, Kasia. You have, go ahead.
Good evening.
Yep.
Sure. So this grant would be to complete the sidewalk on the south side of Elm Street, between the Lombard Drive and Shaker and Elm. So right where Nantucket is over there. Right now, there's quite a beaten path from, I think, students and just the businesses over there, walking through the grass over there. So this would actually put a sidewalk in that location, and it would also allow pedestrian access to this Nantucket. There's a magic carpet bus stop in that area, and a few retail establishments as well. And as Chris said, the estimate for this project is $380,000 for construction, and approximately $45,000 or so for design work. And we've obviously spoken with John Wilcox about this, the Finance Director, and either we, so the deadline is October 16, and we expect it here in January 2021. So he does have the funding available, or it can be budgeted for in the upcoming budget cycle. If we receive this grant, and once we sign the agreement, we have three years to do this project. Please let me know if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Kasia. Any questions from any counselors, again, out in virtual land? Any questions from counselors in the chambers? Kasia, just to be clear, the, this is a grant, but it would cover most of the[1734.73] Kasha, just to be clear, the, this is a grant, but it would cover most of the costs. The town would be on a hook for 45 or so thousand dollars. Just to be clear to taxpayers on, and the other thing too, I think, if anyone knows that section of town very well, you know, I mean, that is a dangerous spot for college kids who are crossing the street. You know, the amount of traffic that's there, you know, you have the, you know, the, the very well, well-used, you know, burger joint that's there, and I think it's a very important project when it comes to some biking and pedestrian walk in that section of town.
Thank you Mary. Yeah, so this grant covers the construction costs. It does not cover design costs. Speaking with our engineering department, typically, we're limiting a 10 to 20% of the project costs, excuse me, construction costs being designed costs. So that's where we're getting the 45,000 from in that, in that ballpark.
Yep, great.
So we, I'll be working with John Wilcox and Donald Lewis in our engineering department, and, you know, making sure that the amount comes from the board.
No, as Chris said, it's a great job by you and Nelson. Again, those little pockets of things that we still are trying to fix, and this is a huge little pocket.
It's a great bargain, I mean, for up to and not to exceeding around 40 to 45,000, we get a $385,000 project constructed by the state. That's, that's a darn good bang for your buck.
No, I agree. Well done folks. Again, sorry, any questions from anyone? Want to make sure? Hearing none, roll call, please Suzanne.
Counselor Sparazza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Counselor Ongar.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Counselor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four. There's eleven in favor and none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item 16, public communications. Would anyone like to speak for the council this time? Yes, sir?
Do they do that here or up there?
Right up here. Or, yeah, yeah, we need the mic, if you don't mind.
We like to be heard sometimes.
Welcome. And if, make sure you just push it on its red and you're good.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Welcome. Oh, sorry. My bad.
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, I have to break it in here. Yeah, I'm Neil Nark on 5 Clear Street. I think we skipped over to public comments on the, on the trash stuff we're talking about here quick, but I just want to, can I revert back to that for a minute?
Just, that was virtual, that we didn't skip over, it was a virtual, you had to submit it virtually, but you're welcome to comment here.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I'm just going to go off some notes here. But presently, who are we sending the trash out to? I mean, is it going out to Suffield for processing? That's a recycling place? Is that just where the recycling's going, and trash is going to Hartford? Is that how it's working, or?
Maybe one, well, yeah, well, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just a couple of questions there. You know, I don't know if it's a back and forth, but, so I'm just curious on where it's going there. And then, I went to the, the CCR authority from Hartford there, and cornered them to their website, that their plant, and we got five in Connecticut, is seems to be the most efficient processor is in trying to keep their costs down, everything else. So I don't know if we're going there, or if that's in the books, or we are going in there, and the costs are just going up and high, and I don't know. The other thing too is, town managers and people within all the towns, the costs are going up across the board, and from what I've seen, the five trash energy plants are all at capacity, and a lot of stuff is being shipped out to other states. Some, some of it's going out to Ohio now. That's not too cheap. So, of course, that's all reflected back in the costs and everything. So I think all towns should kind of get together, get some kind of consortium going, or some kind of thing, and, and see if we can convince Governor Lamont, hey, free up some money here, put some money into your equipment and infrastructure here, because trash is, as we know, it's a throwaway mentality today, you know, and I'm very careful, but a lot of people aren't. And Joe brought up a lot of good points on recycling and trying to separate it better. A lot of people don't. I, I see it's all mixed mash. So, we do, do what we can do here, but I think that the towns get together, really, and try to work something out. Go to these five trash plants, whoever's running those, there's got to be some head people, and see if there can be some, some input there to kind of get their act together and get the capacity increased. It's not easy, it's not fast, it takes time to bring these guys on, online. I just heard that Lamont doesn't want to put the money into Hartford. I know they're dumping a lot of money in there with the, with the odor containment, you know, and they spent 15 million, and, you know, that's all helping with places down there, and they're taking that, the methane and everything else and burning it. And that should be a self-sufficient entity down there. I mean, they're charging tipping fees, they're making electricity, or they're selling that. So, I mean, all that should be reflective in the cost there. So I think, very importantly, to get together and work something out with them. Uh, let's see. You covered the barrels as far as tags, and are any existing gray barrels grandfathered, or we have to get stickers every year? Is anything thought about on that yet, or is that too early in the process? It's, okay. Yeah, let's see, what else, what else? Okay. And that's about it there. I think we covered it all there. And a lot of it was answered during your prior discussions too. Joe did a good job recovering that. So anyway, is there any idea when these subcommittees are going to be meeting on, on the trash stuff again, and where? So, if somebody could comment on that too.
Some will, yep, no worries, yep.
Okay. So thanks for your time. Thanks everybody coming in, doing a good job here, and everybody in virtual land too.
Thank you sir.
Can the general public get in there too, and come on in and watch, or is that, how's that working?
Normal, channel 16.
Normal channel 16?
Yep.
To watch, but I mean, if I want to get on there virtually and get on the screen, there's nothing there yet to do that? Okay. It's all new to me too. Alright. Thanks for coming in everyone.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say for Neil, for your benefit and those at home, we, the Director of Public Works did a very nice presentation at our last meeting, that's up on the website. There's a tremendous amount of information there. It was real, about the Hartford plant, where we go, the future of it. So I encourage you to go online, go into the Town Manager. It's under all of the special presentations that we do, and that's currently up there for your viewing ability. You're welcome.
Like I say, it's a learning process for everybody, and I want to.
And he has the charts, the graphs, and it was a very good presentation, about 15, 20 minutes, so I encourage you to view it, and anybody else at home who missed it, to go there and look at that resource.
That's on YouTube, huh?
That's on the Town Manager website. Under Town Manager, we probably have now 30 or so special reports, talking about that, about a lot of the different specialty issues, where we've had presentations about the roads, indexes, and a lot of other projects. It's much more in-depth, so I encourage you to take a peek.
For those of us who want a little more. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else for, second time Neil, you're good?
I'm good, Mike.
Alright, thank you sir. Declare public communications closed. Moving on to item 17, counselor communications. I'll go to Counselor Bosco first, so you can indirectly answer his questions.
Yeah Neil, the tipper barrels you have, you'll be able to use a second one on the holidays. So, without purchasing anything else, you're going to purchase a tag, so you'll be able to use your second tipper barrel. Right now, they projected it $97 a ton, but there was talk that, and that was where I came up at 238,000 a year, and extra in five years. I mean, they're talking $125 a ton, because there's no place to get rid of it. And just as you said, you know, it's not going to go to Hartford, and when they have to start trucking it out of state, it's really going to get expensive. So, this is trying to be proactive, not reactive, and that's why we're doing what we're doing now. And we're going to, we're going to explain it, and, you know, Charlotte mentioned the other day, you know, maybe we should start looking at what we could recycle more, because she said some towns were having a higher, more items that they could recycle. So, you know, we're going to look at this very thoroughly, and we're going to make a decision that works the best.
Thank you sir. Counselor Hemler.
So Neil, thank you for coming in, because this is exactly what we wanted. You came up with constructive ideas, and, because it's just a community conversation. This is going to take a while. When you watch what's on the Town Manager's office, you'll, you'll see that it's, it's like $10 a ton for recycling, and $80 a ton for garbage, so we need to find a way to educate people to recycle more. I mean, it's, it's just a lot cheaper, because we don't want it, you know, we don't want it to cost more, so we're letting people know now. So, thank you for coming out and, and, and giving us the information and the ideas.
Thank you. Anyone on, counselors on the virtual, any comments? See, see, shake a hand, head, you guys are good. Anyone else in the council chambers? Any other comments or questions? Just in closing, Chris, it's, I want, this is what my, is today we opened up the senior center? I just want to say, I thought it was today, and I don't want to.
It was, thank you Mr. Mayor. I realized in my report.
If you, I wanted to say to you, to your staff, I mean, all the way we've opened up this town over the last six months, we've done it safely, we've done it steadily, we've done it calmly, and today is a great, great day. Our last building officially, even if it's not open full-time yet, I mean, and I can tell you, just personally, all the seniors who have reached out to me over the last six months, they have done a tremendous job of managing through the pandemic, and I am hoping that with this is, again, the beginning of just getting back to what we think is, what is truly the normal. And I think it's a great day, and it's a tribute to you, to Jason Neely, to all the staff, because it really is amazing that we're now.
Well, I'm glad you reminded me. That was my mistake. I wanted to mention, I had it written down, and I didn't. I think, so when you give me nine or 10 things to respond to, I'm better at remembering. Only had one on the farmer's market.
Or, and I forgot my, I lost my mind, so you're better than I.
I thank you for that, and I would just endorse to everybody, much as I did to Neil